Madam President, we have 20 seconds.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners for our staff meeting of March the 2nd. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We're going to move forward. We have just one agenda item in some executive sessions. Before we do that, though, before I introduce our Hamilton County Health Commissioner, Commissioner Greg Kesterman, I'd just like to say we declare right around this time a state of emergency in Hamilton County due to the pandemic. And right about this time, we realized that our lives were going to change. We would not be able to do the things that we had normally been doing. So of course, a year has come and we've made it through. A lot of people did not make it through, and we of course pray for them and their families, but we did not know the toll it would take on families or lives. But we've made it through and we're continuing to try to make it through to whatever the end is. So I want to thank everybody who's watching, who's done all they can do and continue to do things to further the cause of getting out of this pandemic. So without further ado, Commissioner Greg Kesterman is here to give us some updates.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I appreciate you reminding everyone that it has been about a year since things really got underway here with COVID-19 in our community. It's often that my team reflects back, and it's really amazing to see how far we have come as a community with COVID. And even just back in March a year ago, we were sitting around talking to the county commissioners about persons under investigation, not active cases. I remember calling Administrator Aludo on a weekend concerned about a person who might be considered under investigation for COVID, and that person never turned out to be under investigation, and we moved on. But now we're talking about hundreds of cases a day, so we really have come a long way in a year, and I just appreciate you reminding us back how far we've come. So if you could confirm that you can see my slideshow?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. So speaking of how far we've come, Hamilton County has had 73,404 cases of COVID-19. Luckily, a good majority of those cases have recovered. Today, we have about 4,200 active cases of COVID-19 within our community. So there still remains a lot of activity, but you may recall just a week ago when I was presenting to the commissioners, this number was closer to 5,300. So we are seeing a decrease in activity within our county, which is good news, and that mirrors our daily case count, which today we are seeing on average about 131 cases per day, and this number has continued to decline over the last several weeks, which is excellent news for our community, as well as my contact tracers who have finally gotten the necessary relief that they really needed throughout the pandemic as well. Our county percent rate, percent positivity rate is 8.3%, and it is worth noting for the first time in many, many, many months that Hamilton County suburbs, the areas outside of the city of Cincinnati, are lower with regards to percent positivity than those areas within the city of Cincinnati. We are at 7.3% today within the areas outside of the city of Cincinnati. Our reproductive number continues to slip and decline. Today, we are at 0.79, which is also a good news indicator that things are continuing to constrict with COVID-19 activities, and we'll continue to watch this number as we move forward. This is another graphic that was put together by the Health Collaborative and their partners, and I think it does a great job of just showing the magnitude of COVID's impact within our community. You look at the orange, which represents hospitalizations, and you can see they were as high as 800 many times throughout the last several months. Today, we are down at 222 patients within our hospitals with COVID-19. In addition, that blue represents those within our intensive care units, and those numbers were close to 200 often throughout the pandemic, and they're now down at 59. And then of the 59, 56 individuals are on ventilators, which means they are in very, very serious condition. So we've done a great job of keeping people out of the ICU, but once you make it to the ICU, the prognosis is not nearly as good because you have very, very serious illness. But we've made a long, long, long progression throughout this pandemic, and right now, our numbers look very positive. I'll share this slide just to remind folks that we do have variants here in Hamilton County. We have only one case, and that was reported about a week and a half ago. The state of Ohio, since we last met, has about eight additional cases of the variant. I think it's interesting, but I don't think it really changes anything, because the good news is the tools that we have talked about throughout the pandemic remain true. And as you just heard me say, we still have thousands of cases of COVID within our community. So now is not the time to let down our guard. We need to continue to be vigilant and be careful to make sure that we're protecting one another regardless of there being variants within our community. Once again, the Ohio Alert System, we remain as a red county, and that is solely at this time the result of the cases per 100,000. We need this to be below 100 before we're able to transition back to orange, and I would anticipate that happening in the next few weeks, assuming everything kind of continues along the same trajectory. Moving over to vaccines, and there are some updates since we last talked, we are continuing to make great progress here in Hamilton County. The state of Ohio is about 14.5% vaccinated with their first vaccine and proud to report that our 50 providers here in Hamilton County have been successful at getting a vaccine into about 15% of our population. About 122,000 people have received their first vaccine here in Hamilton County. About 8% of those individuals have received their second vaccine. The good news is both one vaccine does, one vaccine does start to provide some immunity to COVID, but two vaccines is clearly better and gives you the full, the full strength of that vaccine series. The other thing I want to share is some of our distribution strategies. On the couple pictures observed there are our team onboard a Council on Aging bus with the support of the Hamilton County Commissioners. Council on Aging received funding to help transport seniors to vaccine sites. Working very closely with Ken from Council on Aging, our team has invited them to the Board of Elections. They are bringing buses to us with seniors from senior apartment buildings. We have a nurse hop onboard the bus, vaccinate the seniors, hang out for the 15 minutes for the observation period, and then the bus heads on its way and brings more seniors to us. We have found this to be a very efficient way to get folks vaccinated, and it's really exciting. These folks are all very pleased to get their vaccine. In addition, the commissioners are aware that starting last week, we started doing some outreach specifically with churches within our community. Last week, we provided 450 vaccines to two churches, and we're successful at seeing about 91% of those vaccinated being Black or African American. So our goal is really to make sure we're hitting those minority communities and getting vaccine to our communities, and so far, our efforts are continuing to be successful. Our team is also working very directly with assisted living locations that were not part of the initial vaccine rollout from the federal government, as well as senior apartment buildings to make sure that we can get vaccine directly to those individuals and make it easy for them to get vaccinated. And then, as you're aware, we continue to do a lot of work out at the Board of Elections. So who's now eligible? Yesterday, Governor Dewine had a surprise announcement sharing that those that are over 60, beginning on Thursday, will now be eligible to receive vaccine from all of the providers in the state of Ohio. In addition, he opened it up to a few individuals with diabetes, pregnant women, those with bone marrow transplants, as well as those living with ALS, and three new professions have been added to the vaccine schedule, including those working in our childcare and daycare services, our funeral homes, and law enforcements and corrections officers. So starting Thursday, if you fall into one of these groups, you will now be eligible to receive vaccine from any of the providers in Hamilton County or the state of Ohio. Our office will begin using our registration list and contacting additional folks within those criteria, as well as holding special clinics just for law enforcement so that we can quickly get this priority group taken care of and vaccinated. And the final slide I have for you prepared talks about the new vaccine that is available. We have had in Hamilton County the two vaccines listed on the left, the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine. Both of these vaccines are very effective, but they also both require two doses of the vaccine, meaning you must come back to the clinic to get a second shot. The newest vaccine, which is now available, we actually received our first doses today in Hamilton County. It is only requiring a single dose of the vaccine. So this is really powerful. You just saw a slide in which we are transporting seniors from their homes to the Board of Elections. If we could start using Johnson &amp; Johnson's vaccine on those individuals, they will only have to make one trip to the Board of Elections. So it will be very effective for our team to use vaccine like this for seniors coming to our clinics or those that are homebound where we have to go out to each individual home and figure out a way to vaccinate. So we're really excited. The vaccine is very effective. It's listed as 85% effective in preventing severe COVID-19. So we are very excited to have another tool in our toolbox. We anticipate that the state of Ohio, which received about 100,000 doses this week, will continue receiving the Johnson &amp; Johnson moving forward, and I anticipate that public health will continue to get allocations of this vaccine so that we can hold special clinics and continue to make efforts within our minority communities and other sensitive communities. I will stop there, and I am happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. How many doses did we get of the Johnson &amp; Johnson in Hamilton County?
So I can only speak for the four health departments, and it's my understanding each of the four health departments received 300 doses of the Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to open it up, Bridget, if anybody is in the waiting room that had a question for the Commissioner.
There doesn't appear to be anybody on the other side. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. Vice President Alicia Reese, would you, you have comments?
Yes. First, I want to also join with the Commission as we certainly remember the many lives that have been lost to COVID and to those families that are out there. Just want to add that we certainly keep everyone in their prayers and hoping to get the vaccine to folks so that we don't lose, continue to lose people. I want to thank Commissioner Kesterman for your work on that, but I do want to bring up a couple of things as we're looking to always improve. Couple of things that I wanted to bring up. One is the Council on Aging and the transportation of getting seniors there. Certainly, we'd like to know what the numbers of seniors that have been able to be able to be transported, and that might be a conversation that we want to have them on. But I also want to look at what are some ways that we can provide a mobile unit that can go into senior communities, low-income neighborhoods. I know Hampton University nationally has a bus, HBCU, they're doing a bus to go into those communities. And I had received an email from one of our honorees for Black History Month, Bernadette Watson, along with Sandra Jones Mitchell from SOAC that deals, she's on the ground with African American seniors every day. And one of the things they are concerned about in the letter that they sent me was that they've been unable to get answers to assist seniors and others who are homebound to be provided with the, with the vaccine. And so I wanted to ask, obviously, our Commissioner, Health Commissioner, you don't control, you know, what we do or how we do it, it's controlled by the governor, and he kind of tells us what to do. But are there any conversations on getting a mobile unit? Because I certainly think we would be interested in seeing if that could be funded, but some mobile unit or something that goes into seniors who are homebound? Because one of the things we're telling seniors is really, don't come out the house. And now we're saying, get on this bus to come to the Board of Elections. Is there anything in the works to help homebound seniors to kind of keep them at home, keep them safe?
Absolutely. There are a few different strategies. First, let me touch on those that are unable to leave home because of medical conditions, those homebound individuals. Up until about two weeks ago, there really were no opportunities or solutions that were able to be provided. The state of Ohio, following the guidance from the pharmaceutical companies, indicated that you could not transport an open vial of vaccine or a syringe filled with vaccine. So anyone that was homebound, if we took a bottle of vaccine to their house and pulled one syringe full of vaccine out and vaccinated them, we would have to discard or have five other people come to their home to be successful. About a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, the state of Ohio, following new federal guidelines, changed their requirements, and now we are able to transport open containers of vaccine for up to six hours. So what this is allowing us to do, we're looking at a couple of strategies here locally. We are looking at working and partnering with fire departments, and we are looking and working at partnering with home healthcare agencies that are already going to these locations. Almost everyone that's homebound and can't get out of their home has a home healthcare provider coming to them. So this week, my team is actually working with one home healthcare agency, kind of doing a small test pilot. We are also in partnership with the Council on Aging that maintains many lists associated with those that are not able to leave their home. As far as traveling to locations, we have been doing that. You know, it is a resource-rich requirement. It takes a lot of people to make that happen. And so there's a couple of strategies. When an apartment building has a common area where we can have folks come and sit for 15 minutes while we vaccinate multiple people, we're really trying to take advantage of those locations. Unfortunately, if we walk into an apartment building and there's only apartments in a hallway, then we actually have to go into each apartment and sit for 15 minutes. So vaccinate, sit for 15 minutes, take the nurse, go to the next apartment and sit for 15 minutes because of that observation period. And so those are the more difficult situations where we're trying to partner a little more with Council on Aging. And the third area that I'll share is that what we're finding through our partnership is that many of these seniors have already been vaccinated elsewhere. So an apartment building with 10 units, potentially as many as six or seven, have been vaccinated elsewhere. And so this is really where that power of the Council on Aging coming in and helping us transport has been very beneficial. We're able to finish up the building of those who want to get vaccinated, but also make sure that we're not letting anyone behind.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to bring that up because this email came on March the 1st of 2021, and I think all three of us know Sandra Jones Mitchell and the work that she's doing, particularly among African American seniors. And there's still too many that have not gotten the vaccine, don't have access to transportation, or because of different health issues probably do not need to be transported. So I would like to see Commissioner Kesterman, your team possibly working with her. I know I passed that along, and I think you're already on top of it. But I also would like to put out the opportunity to look at a mobile unit that could go into minority communities. I know we have clinics that we've been setting up, but a mobile unit, a possibility of that, and seeing, because I thought that was a great thing that Hampton University is doing, and they're doing, trying to do in other areas, and maybe we might have something similar going on here. If we do, I'd love to promote it and all of us promote it and get it out there. But I think that is the way to go, is we get more vaccine available to us. And then lastly, I just want to point out, we have been really focused on making sure African Americans, you know, doing a public relations campaign, and we've done a good job. African Americans, take the shot. African Americans, take the shot. But we found that the research came out in the paper, and I want to thank the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus for working on this. We found in Ohio, only 9% of African Americans are saying that they won't take the shot, where 20% of Caucasians in Ohio said they don't want to take the shot. So I don't think, I think we need to put that myth to bed. We are, people want to take the shot. I think the best thing to do is to start getting the shot, and I say this to the state, you know, our governor, get the shot to the African Americans, and they will take the shot. Only 9% said they would not take the shot, so I want to get that myth out of there. There are African Americans who want to take the shot. So we're spending a lot of energy on a public relations campaign, where really, we need the supply. And I think that's what our board has been saying, get the supplies down here. There's people who do want to take the shot. We just haven't had enough supplies. And then the other thing, as we do a special class, as we're opening up special class, the USA Today came out, and they said that the system that's being used throughout the United States of America dealing with age only has been, I know all of us have been dealing with the issue of equity. That is not fair to African Americans because our life expectancy is a lot lower. So when you put a age of 70 or 75, you don't capture the group that is dying the fastest from COVID because we also have a low life expectancy. So one of the things that the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus and others are asking is that African Americans be identified as one of the special classes since they're dying at the largest numbers. That is the best way for us to have some type of equity of the group that's dying the fastest. So I just wanted to point that out, the USA Today article, and I thought that was interesting, and it goes in line with what our board and our Health Commissioner has been saying, that we've got to make sure that we're hitting the people that are getting hit the hardest. And so I just wanted to bring that up, some data that supports our efforts to get more to the minority community, particularly the African American community. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I hear about the mobile van. That sounds like a great idea, and I think that's something we need to look in as, into as quickly as we can, because we know transportation is a major restraint for seniors. And as you mentioned about African Americans are more willing to take the vaccine, it has really changed. There's been a lot of education in churches and media and messaging and important people in the community and around the United States, African Americans that have encouraged and encouraged the use of the vaccine. So I agree, that has really, really changed, and now people are willing to do that for many reasons. So thank you for your comments.
If I may real quick, just add on, in the mobile van, through the County Cares Act, we were able to purchase vans that transport vaccine, and so we have been using them. They're not very good. So it sounds like the Hampton, Hamilton University, or I'm sorry, the Hampton University model actually allows people to come on like a full clinic. We don't have that here, but what we do have is the ability to bring vaccine to a community, keep it safe and in the right temperatures, and invite people down to the van. So I think it's warmer months come, we'll have a little bit, bit better access, but I will look further into this, this model that's being used in Hampton University.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. So Greg, we had talked earlier about the difference between the vaccines, the Pfizer, Moderna, and the J&amp;J, because there's some conversation about the J&amp;J not being as effective, but the important thing to note is that it does keep people safe from getting severe consequences from COVID. So I was hoping that as we, you know, see more of the J&amp;J vaccine in Hamilton County, can you elaborate just a little bit so that we all have an understanding of the value of taking any of the vaccines when they become available?
Well, what we know is that if you get COVID-19, the repercussions are very serious, and it can result in significant hospitalization and illness as well as death. And all three vaccines are extremely effective at keeping people out of the hospital and from dying from COVID-19. So if you have an opportunity and it's your turn to get vaccinated, I strongly encourage everyone to take that, to take that opportunity and to get vaccinated. All three vaccines have had independent studies proving that they're safe and effective, and I think it's really important for folks not to forget that.
Yeah, I just want to reemphasize that point. So when someone has the ability to get vaccinated, no matter what vaccine it is, they should jump at the chance and get vaccinated, because that chance might not come along again for a while. So, all right, very good. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with nothing else being said, Greg, I thank you, Commissioner Kesterman, I thank you for coming forth and all, as everyone has said, all that you are doing and your team. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Thanks, Greg.
So our next item on the agenda is a discussion, Care for Caregivers Agreement with the Health Gap. And Jeff, I have you down, Lisa Webb, for this discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'm going to kick it over to Lisa here in just a second, but just for folks who may be watching at home, just to set this up a bit, as the board is well aware, the taxpayers of Hamilton County have approved voted levies under the board, voted property tax levies under the board to address a wide array of really major community issues, everything from providing needy children with care to addressing mental health issues, to addressing issues for people with developmental, the developmentally disabled services for medical services for the indigent, et cetera. So the, the public, the residents of Hamilton County have been very generous in providing voted tax levies for a wide array of services, and we're going to talk about one of those today. In 2017, the voters continued a levy that exists for, to provide care and resources for senior citizens in Hamilton County, including funding for adult protective services as well as a system of providing care to ensure that senior residents can remain in their homes for as long as possible, whether it is by providing meals to the home, home maintenance, providing certain healthcare services at home, et cetera. And for the past several years, one of the major policy initiatives of the board that specifically got scripted into this last levy renewal was a specific targeted program around the specific needs of caregivers and trying to address the specific and very taxing needs and demands that we know come with providing care to, to an elderly family member, et cetera. So that was a specific targeted goal of the last Senior Services Levy. We are now ready to move forward with, with that program. It's taken us a while, and Lisa is going to go through some of the reasons why it's taken us a little bit of time to get this particular program on track, but we are ready to advance it. We have an item on the board's agenda for Thursday, and we just wanted to walk through the scope of the program as well as give a little bit more background on it. So, Madam President, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Senior Policy Manager Lisa Webb.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd just like to start to say, as Jeff said, there were three programs that we included in the Senior Services Levy, new programs specifically targeting seniors at up to $250,000 a year for each of the programs. That was Senior Homeless Respite and Patient Navigation, as well as Care for Caregivers, which we're speaking about today. Those three programs all had RFPs drafted for them and were put out in early 2018. We received those back. We have contracted with the other two agents, the other two vendors for their services. When we received the responses, though, from Care for Caregivers, we realized that this new program that we were doing, we hadn't correctly scoped. And the proposals we received were not going to address the needs for seniors in the way that we wanted the levy to. So we went back, sort of back to draft on the papers and reissued that RFP. In fall of 2019, we received a great proposal, which I'm happy to speak about today. In early 2019, or excuse me, early 2020, and then COVID hit. But speaking about it, and as you, as you'll listen to what the program is, you can see why there were some difficulties this year, but we've made some modifications and we're happy to get started. And what we found, just a little bit of background on the need for this Care for Caregivers program, was when we were speaking to a lot of senior residents, the physical and mental program, problems that they confront as they age, but a lot of those have, have family members and other caregivers taking care of them in their homes so that they can continue to live with their homes. Some are connected with Council on Aging and the ESP Elderly Services Program that Jeff mentioned earlier. But the caregivers that are, that are helping these seniors, we found much with them, they're thrust into these roles with little or no training on how to provide the care. They want to help their elderly family members or neighbors and friends, but a lot of the time, that means that they put those, those individuals' care above their own care and their, their own health needs, and they suffer as a result. While in a lot of times, and especially in 2020, they're juggling that with their own children in their home they're taking care of, increased rates of depression, chronic illness, decline in quality of life, alcoholism, all kinds of issues. Well, and additionally, what we've found in other studies in 2017, there are racial differences in caregiving, and specifically African American caregivers are spending more hours caring for loved ones in comparison to other members of the community. So we've sought proposals from organizations to help these caregivers better prepare themselves to take care of seniors and keep them in their homes. This care specifically, we wanted to include training and education for those caregivers, barriers to self-care, health holistic coping strategies, stress reduction, communication, goal-setting, and solutions to their caregiving situations. Another piece that we specifically included in this training was detail and information on how the organization that we partner with is going to reduce the disparities on health risks faced by African American caregivers as a part of this program. Again, that was put out in fall of 2019. We received the responses. Center for Closing the Health Gap presented a proposal to reduce those disparities designed around a re-incurring series of weekly interactive, this was initially in-person sessions, to deliver services customized for African American caregivers in the community. Distribution of knowledge, the assumption that exposure to all of this information would be a catalyst to increase the, these caregivers' awareness, help with their behaviors... Would be a catalyst to increase the these caregivers' awareness, help with their behaviors. And enhance their skill sets in how they care, not only for the seniors, but for themselves as well. So that they can help lobby, not only, again, for the seniors, but for themselves in the healthcare system. So we worked with Center for Closing the Health Gap. We had drafted an initial contract for them in the spring. In the onset of COVID, we reached out to them and realized, given the time, given the situation we were in, given the need to keep all of those seniors. As safe as possible and quarantined, we put a pause on putting the contract into place. Spoke again with Renee McCaffrey Harris in the fall about the program. She had figured out a way to respond. And do it virtually with the caregivers. And we began moving forward on getting that contract finalized from that point to where we are right now. So now we're ready to get this program launched. Super excited, especially where we're at right now in the community. To try to coordinate with these caregivers, helping seniors get the vaccines and do everything we possibly can. To keep them safe as well as helping the caregivers as well. Wraparound services included in this program. It's not just the education in these weekly meetings. It's respite. If these caregivers need help and need an hour break so they can. Go to their own appointments, do anything that they need to, the program allows. For that to be in place. Connection and support with other caregivers, maybe even just through Zoom for the time being. But they're still identifying with other people that are going through similar issues that they are confronted with, as well as social services coordination. Working with housing, financial, legal assistance, working on their own physical and mental health. Medications, home safety issues, finance issues that they could be confronted with, as well as navigating the insurance system. All part of this program. That said, we're ready to get it started, working with Renee. We're hoping to launch, you know, early into. Say quarter two this year, looking at April. But this gives approving the contract will give them the tools that they need to get started moving all of their systems into place. Hiring staff.
Thank you, Lisa. Lots of services that will be. What is the total amount of the?
It's a maximum of $250,000 a year.
Okay, thank you. Open it up for any questions or comments. Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And and I appreciate Lisa for. Bringing us up to date on this because I did have a concern. That the levy was passed in 2017, I believe. And I'm in 2021, and we're coming with a contract, just getting together. And those are a lot of services that you indicated that they're responsible for at a maximum of $250,000. And I was looking at other contracts, and the deliverables are much less than this, and they'd be a lot larger contracts. When is the, let me, before I go to that, let's go to the other programs. You said you had three new programs.
Yes.
This is one of the three. The other two programs, when were those contracts executed?
They they were all put out to bid at roughly the same timeframe in 2018. So the levy was approved in 2017. The RFPs for those contracts went out. In early 2018. I believe those contracts were approved probably mid-18. Summer timeframe. And like I said, this one was issued at the same time, and what we had put out was not matching what we thought it would be. I think the delay. While I would much rather have had this approved in 2020. The delay has allowed for what I think is going to be a really impressive program.
Gotcha. And when is the the levy renewal? What is that date coming up?
The levy is actually up for renewal next next year, so in November of 2022.
So 2022 will have a brand new levy. Now, these other two programs, are those those contracts were executed and completed?
Those contracts were executed in 2018, yes.
And are they completed?
They're in service right now, yes.
They're in service. So they didn't stop during the COVID?
No. So Center for Respite Care was awarded the homeless respite services. And they continue to care for homeless seniors with medical conditions through COVID. They actually, I believe, came forward and spoke during the budget hearing about some of the things that they had been doing. And Patient Navigation is working mainly with individuals that are coming through St. Vincent de Paul. For Pharmaceutical Services, which is another contract we have through the levies. Through our Indigent Care Levy. And they are helping seniors that have difficulty navigating the healthcare system. With providing that crossroad for them during that time as well. That is less in person. Unable to continue.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, my my only concern was that the timing of it and considering that we're getting ready to consider another levy. So. The other groups will be able to come back for another contract. We're just.
Well, and they they all will. So the the levy contracts, really in all situations for levies that are RFP generated. Are put in place for the levy, whatever's left of the remaining levy period. Unfortunately, in this case. It's through 20, the end of 2022, with an optional one-year extension. So if the Commissioners approve, including the service in the next levy cycle. There will be a one-year where that contract will still remain in place. So if we need to RFP and put that contract back out to bid or do any modifications on it. We have the time to do that without a delay in services. So the services can still continue.
Okay, well, yeah, Madam President and Commissioner Drehouse, I mean, I appreciate this affirmation. I just wanted to point out, sometimes it's tough when you give. Particularly, it happens a lot with minority businesses. They get a contract. And it takes so long for some reason when the minority contract is up. And it's it's even thicker. This contract is a lot thicker than some of these other contracts that we've been saying. And then we give them a short amount of time, you know, because the contract is up to $250,000. It's not $250,000. So if you have less months to do the contract, you might only do $100,000 because you ran out of time. And so those are the things that I want us to start putting, you know, forward to the administration, which we probably have. And I. Express this to to Jeff as well, as we have been very, I think, clear as a board about the inclusion of minority businesses and contracts. Those are some of the stumbling things. When we get a contract, time is running out. We can't use. It says $250,000, but we only got $100,000 because we ran out of time, which means we weren't able to. Help as many people as they probably want to help. So I just want to put those things on the table as we move forward. I'm nothing against this contract with the Health Gap and the services that they're going to provide. But I did want to point that out, that I had some concerns about that, because we're getting ready to get on a whole nother levy. And we're still trying to get up and running. And I think it would have been great for them to be a part of COVID with seniors, because I was out there. Delivering meals on wheels. Seniors needed help, and the home care people needed to know where to go. And we all switched to Zoom, so it might have been a good service to help people in this very tough time. So. I'm glad we got it and look forward to moving forward. But I would hope in the future. That we could move these contracts, you know, legally, ethically, but in the same amount of speed as we do with other clients. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lisa, I know when I first came, I brought up levies in general and how long. It's to really get the monies distributed and and choose the proposals. And then you gave me an outline. Of what you have to do once that levy passed and why it sometimes takes. A lot, because I remember saying, it's been a year and a half. And so I'm just wondering if you or Jeff could maybe. Give us, not now, of course, a guideline of once that levy is passed, what takes place? In order to get certain providers giving money through that levy. That would be helpful for me. And I'm sure it'd be helpful for the board, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's it's surprising to a lot of people when you see what's really involved. It's not just get through November, the levy's approved, and we sort of. There's a lot of steps along the way. I'm happy to share that. I just updated the new Tax Levy Commission Committee as well with that information in preparation for the levy review this year.
And Madam and Madam President, we can certainly provide that that outline, I think, as Lisa said, and just to. To re-hit the the issue that the real difference between this one and the other two programs that were bid was. The the other two programs, Respite Care was something that was pretty pretty rote. We knew exactly what that was going to be. Patient Navigation. We were able to find a little bit more out there as well. This one, as Lisa said. We just scoped the program in a way that when when the responses came back. Was just not in accordance with, I think, what the board policy was, and we wanted to see, and the responses reflected that. So unfortunately, we had to go back to the drawing board on it. Right before COVID. So I think all of the things being equal, we would have preferred to have this program launched at the same time as other two programs. But the good news is we'll at least get this launched with a year in advance of the next TLRC process review. That starts on this, as well as, you know, almost a full two years before the before the next levy is voted on. So. We'll, and that starts with the board's action potentially on Thursday.
So Jeff, was closing the Health Gap in the initial submission of proposals, or did they come after you revamped it? Revamped the qualifications?
They were not in the initial submission.
Yeah, they did not submit in the initial one. They submitted in the follow-up.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thanks, Madam President. Thanks, Lisa, for the presentation. You know, I do want to note that I'm. Very glad that this is coming online. These were some new. Policy directions that we set related to the levy, the Senior Services Levy. Little outside of what had been going on prior to this levy being passed. And so these were brand new programs that we wanted to. And really, it was a response to what we heard during the public hearings. Because people came into the public hearings and they were telling the Commissioners. About some of the needs related to seniors and Indigenous care, if we'll recall. Because they were both running at the same time. And so we were left with, you know, how can we try to address some of these needs? And not overdo it with increases to all the levies, because there's always this balancing act. And so the senior levy was the one that got the increase. And so we felt as though there was some capacity there to do something a little bit different. Responding to what we had heard from the constituents at the public hearing. So these three programs are a result of that. I I'm glad this is finally coming. I know it it took a minute to to get this done. But we did want to hit the mark. And so I'm glad that we finally have this available for caregivers, because. I think some of the reports that, again, that we had heard through the public hearings. Coming through different organizations, including COA. Said that this was a deficit, that there was not a lot of care for the caregiver, and that it really impacted the care they were giving to the seniors. And so we felt it was important to go in this direction. So glad it's getting off the ground. Look forward to supporting it. Did you say on Thursday, Jeff, it'll come forward?
It is on the agenda for Thursday.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And and Madam President, if I could just just real quickly, just thank Lisa for all of her work on this. She does a great job managing the levy process as a whole. Which is a handful in and of itself. The, we have seven functional areas out there of levies from Children's Services, Mental Health, Disability Services, the Zoo. Lisa handles all of these pretty much single-handedly and works with the the TLRC. And also then takes on the these policy-driven programs. That fall out of various levies as well and make sure that those get get up and running. So I want to thank Lisa for all of her work on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bridget, could you please make sure there is nobody on the line that wants to speak before to executive session?
Uh, there is not. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have two items before us. Executive Session pursuant to RC Section 121. Point 22G4 regarding collective bargaining. And Item 4, Executive Session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3. To conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD. I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Mr. Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.